Well, it is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Meeting everyone on this hot, weird, breezy, not breezy, windy, windy evening. Hopefully, the power will stay on. For evening tonight. So, let's do roll call. Okay, trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee George, your trustee, your trustee Downey.
Your trustee Hayes.
Here.
Freehand here. Absent.
I'd like to ask if you want to join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, on the bottom, indivisible, with underwritten justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, as you guys will remember, May is when we reelect board officers, where we reelect or appoint or volunteer committees.
And it's our annual business meeting.
It's our annual business meeting. So, we do need a secretary, curate temp. Foray, perhaps, I'm not sure how to say that. Would anyone like to nominate someone to be our secretary for the evening?
I will nominate Alex.
Let's see, is there a second? Thank you, trustees Church and trustees Georgine, all of them favor. I oppose. Ally, your star. You. Okay, tonight's agenda. Any additions or protections? Hearing none. Opportunity for the public to address the board. We have no one physically present. Katie, do we have anyone online?
None.
All right, we are ahead of schedule. Love it. So, that takes us to our first agenda item, which is a presentation from Midwest Consulting Environmental Services. So, I'm going to turn it over to Renee and/or Jeanie. To discuss.
I was just going to share.
Agreed introduction. Yeah, it's building related, so I was a bit more.
So, as you all know, the board approved a master planning project with Engberg Anderson. And that is to assess possible improvements to the building and to ultimately have a financial target for the board to work towards in making improvements to the library. A part of that process that was recommended to the library by Sean Kelly is an environmental report. And after some research, I found that the lot, this library had not had a current environmental report on file as of the last at least 10 years. And that include 15 years, including the last remodel project in like the early 2010s. So, Sean recommended that we go out for a quote for an environmental report, which the deliverables are both an assessment of lead paint and asbestos in your building. And so, we at the building and grounds reviewed the three quotes. The winning quote was Midwest Consulting Environmental Services, MCES. And I'm pleased to introduce you all to Robert Meliker, who was the one who provided the initial quote for the services. And he is going to be here tonight to present the findings for the board, as well as the public viewing this recording. So, thank you, Robert, for joining us.
Of course.
Take it away.
All right. Well, I am Robert Meliker at Midwest Environmental. Thanks for having me here. It's a little bit about the company, full service environmental consulting firm. Been doing this for about 30 years and 10 years myself. Yeah, the pleasure of conducting asbestos and lead surveys on a comprehensive basis for the library. And I did bring card copies that I made passing town here. Great.
No problem.
So, you see, there's two tabs inside of there. The first tab is going to be asbestos survey, the second is the lead, and there's follow up sampling. I'm really not going to spend much time on lead today because we did not find any.
Yes.
Go past that.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, really, what I'll focus on is the findings of the asbestos survey. And then I do have what's referred to as an abatement budget. So, we did find some positives. Ultimately, I will get to that here in just a moment. So, the asbestos survey is a comprehensive asbestos survey. Ultimately, to find out yes or no, is there asbestos in the building? We did find asbestos in various materials. There's a couple of things like 12 by 12 floor tile and mastic. There was beige floor tile and mastic. We did find drywall taping compound that was positive for asbestos, as well as a second type of 12 inch by 12 inch floor tile mastic. And a couple of miscellaneous floor tiles. So, actually, the meat and potatoes of the report is actually that field table that you're on, starting. So, if you look at any of our inspection results, so that page here.
Page one.
Perfect. Anything you see in a black, black colored box, it's negative for asbestos. Anything in red is positive. All samples collected go to a third party laboratory, just to ensure what the material is for, very much. How you read this report in summary, going from left to right. HSA is a homogenous sample area. That's how we code the samples. It's material description, things like 12 inch, and how large it is, what it looks like, any other descriptions. Material location is where it was found inside of the building. Some materials may be one location, others, if there are multiple, will have comments showing there's been other places as well. It really, the next big quantity or category there is going to be the quantity. So, that's the cumulative sum of that material not in the building. The column type of analysis, PLN, stands for polarized light microscopy, which is a long winded way of saying what method and type of microscope they use to confirm it was asbestos. Any questions I can answer about field table yet?
I have a quick question. When you test, do you have controls that you run at the same time?
So, that only a licensed inspector would can collect samples. They have their protective equipment in place and a sample according to safety procedures. Is there something additional you're looking for as control wise?
So, control meaning when you're, however you run this test, like I think about a centrifuge, because that's a type of us are more familiar with. You know, usually when the control so that something comes back positive, you have something in there that you know is going to come out negative already. So, it's something when we do a PLN test, do you find it controlling?
So, the laboratory will have their own set of engineering controls in place at the time of analysis. When we're collecting samples, they may use various types of mechanical tools to actually pull it from the building system, whether it may be a razor scraper or chisel. But the really engineering controls happen at the laboratory level.
Gotcha.
To make sure there's no contaminations.
Thank you.
All right. So, if you were to continue on past our field tables here, every material sample is going to have a drawn very much following suit of the field tables. Anything that has a red color in its shading is represented a very positive material and where it was found. Anything that in pages is drawn that is green is negative, as a quick reference. Red is positive, green is negative.
So, for example, the first visual that you see here, we are in the room, we are in the meeting room. It's not the carpet, it's the tile underneath the carpet. Because when the carpet was laid, the tile underneath it was not pulled up. And you may remember the feedback from the carpet vendor talking about the the issues with the carpet itself, you know, and stickiness. But another reason it's hard to stick to is because of the substance underneath the carpet. And that is what was found and tested as positive. So, just to provide that background.
So, if you were to go to the following page, there's a green one. It is labeled TJA cementitious pipe fittings. That means that pipe fittings that we tested were negative for asbestos. As was the duct sealant on the page below it. And you'll see all the green, those are negative things. So, those are things as far as abatement factor or environmental, I think, myself, would not be concerned with, which I'll discuss in materials there. Those are things if planned, the work, the renovations, the demolition has to take place. There's no environmental concern. So, you next trace and go and safely do it with YouTube without contamination or hazard. So, all, all of the pages following are all locations of the sampled materials, and they're positive and negatives. Every sample has a drawing accompanying it at the very end, also photographs of each sampled material. So, if you want to know what that material in description looks like, there's going to be photographs of each material, of what it looks like. So, if we ever need to ask, hey, Renee, is this asbestos containing? Whether it's no memory or it can walk down the hall with the report. Yep, that's it for sure. Now we know what to do.
Robert, can you talk a little bit about what you told me about what types of materials have asbestos in them? For example, it may not always relate to the part of the building that is the oldest. For example, part of the library building that came back positive is actually the drywall used in the museum edition in the early 2000s. So, that was surprising to me. And then I learned more from Robert. So, if you want to talk about.
Absolutely. So, there are over 3,000 documented types of asbestos containing materials that come from building materials. It was heavily moved in the 60s and faded out in the 70s. But in other countries, it's not illegal to produce it or export it. So, sometimes it can still come into the country, and that's where we still find it today. It's been, from our company's standpoint, it's still been our leading service for the last 30 years. We find it in relatively new buildings. If it's unknown where that material came from. Sometimes you'll see it from China, other Middle Eastern countries, Canada is also another exporter. So, it does find its way into the country. So, that is something to be considered when we recommend buildings being surveyed.
And even more of a reason why, whenever a construction project is happening, to work with an architect and construction project company that tests their materials, that can tell you for certain, none of the materials they have have asbestos in them. So, that was great to know.
Exactly. So, if the floor tile that's underneath this carpet came out, our recommendation would be there is new floor tile going in to either check with the architect, because we're looking for something that's called an SDS sheet that will say no asbestos containing materials on the product we can factor. Or we can test it and prove that there's no asbestos there. But those are two recommended options for new materials. So, even as the regulations stand, if you build a building and completed it tomorrow, want it demolished the next day, you still need to have an asbestos survey like you just completed done to prove there's no asbestos contamination issues.
I just asked you quickly, I would assume these are the beams, what's encasing the beams? And this is, is this drywall?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's not necessarily what's encasing the beams. Remember, you were telling me, you don't necessarily know which part of the beam has the asbestos.
Right. So, drywall, it's going to be consistent. The drywall material itself, taping, compound. What EPA and IDPH is going to tell you, one of those three components of the drywall system comes back positive, you need to call it all positive. This, we look at the drywall system, you can't tell where it starts and stops on the safety precaution path and take it off. So, that's not, that's actually going to drive, that is what we're looking at. And that particular corner there, we did receive permission to take the sample, but that is one of our separate ones there for.
Good question.
It's just so random, just these covered places, you know, encasing the post side of the service or structural posts. That.
Different dates of construction, you see some of it, call it irregularities. If everything was built all at the same time, with the same installations contracted, you would expect to find a lot of consistencies throughout property. If there's multiple builders, different ages of construction, something's variables introduced, which is kind of what we're seeing here, where we see certain things in certain age in the building and not in others. We have your photographs showing these materials. But why that's called the asbestos survey? There you'll see logos with BMSL analytical, that is the laboratory located Hillside. That's where our scientists go for analysis. This lists all the materials that were sampled. Ultimately, the far right column says asbestos percentage type. State of Illinois, if something is 1% or greater, is considered asbestos containing. Following the laboratory information, there's a chain of custody that our inspector documents and submits to laboratories. So, legally binding documents, they're handed off and signed for with the laboratory and received, as well as their credentialing. Follow that. And all the licensing from our inspector should follow that ultimately, so there are licensed inspectors in the building.
I just want to thank Robert and Stephen, who did some of the testing in his team. They were incredibly thorough. They came three times visits to the library to make sure they had every little piece. And in fact, we're here at the library recently to get the last set of samples. And I'm glad they did because one of them came back positive. So, thank you, Robert, for that attention to the detail.
Thanks. I know there's a lot of information that came out of what asbestos surveys, I said subject. Are there any questions?
Yes. Can you mention that in the state of Illinois, 10% of the readers consider asbestos containing? Are there other states that have different thresholds or are you familiar with those?
So, I, different states have some different rules. If the HIRA and NESHF rules and regulations are a federal law, that's what they refer to. 1% is generally accepted across every state. Now, Wisconsin has more stringent testing, where it's anything and everything that is not wood, glass, or metal has to be sampled. So, they would fire a little bit more than compared to Illinois. So.
Okay, but 1% is a national standard, and people can go more stringent, or state, some states, Wisconsin.
You could. Wisconsin often does. And really, in Illinois, there are two categories of asbestos regulation. There's going to be K through 12 schools that have their own set of rules. And then commercial and public buildings, those are the two sets of rules. Schools are more stringent because there are kids inside of them. Commercial and public buildings are still stringent, but when it comes to abatements, there are more phases that they need to go through in order to get to final air clearance. So, it's still almost identical processes, testing and abatements. Just there's a little bit more testing in your abatement project.
1% is just the general. It's that I showed.
But consider the size of the sample. How, how large is the sample?
About a quarter. Okay.
And then consider some of the square footage of some of these spaces. So.
Right, right.
And it's all about if it's made airborne. So.
Oh, exactly. Exactly. Yeah, yeah. It's probably all about, I don't know, parts per million or whatever.
They would actually, when they're doing the process, they're actually counting fibers.
Really?
Parts per million may be more applicable to like volatile organic compound or chemicals in the air, be very applicable. This particular analysis is actually counting fibers in a microscope field. Distinguishable what is asbestos fiber and what may be debris.
But it's still airborne, it's still very light.
Yeah, asbestos material itself.
Yeah, yeah.
It's almost limitless. There's no law in Illinois that says you have to abate asbestos in your building. Really, it all comes down to condition. So, even though there's not positive fittings in this building, if that was wrapped with asbestos material and it was just starting to deteriorate and fall apart, if it's going that direction, it would be our recommendation that something needs to be done with it to mitigate that. Or if it's part of an renovation project, we should make that, sure that's clearly well given for.
So, an example of that, I had, Robert and I were in this space, the staff entrance. And that orange tile is some of the asbestos positive material that was tested. If you look at the actual tile leading up to the door, the actual door, you'll notice the tile is deteriorating. And so, I asked, I said, why did the rating for this space get a positive, you know, good, even though this part of the tile is deteriorating? He said, it's because of the size of the space. But if we wanted to do anything with that door, like have an armed door for badge access, if we have workers in that space, your recommendation based on observing that space is to abate it because it is deteriorating, and we could decide to abate, you know, the first three rows of tile, just to make sure that there's no risk for anybody doing work in that space. That was what I was most concerned about.
Right. So, whether that is known disruption to asbestos material through, say, you have to drill through to put, run through conduits and water. You can remove just enough to do that, or you can take up more, or if there's external circumstances, like there's water intrusion.
Which.
Under tile, it's pop it if there's too much.
And that is not weather sealed. I mean, that, there is weather that comes through that staff door. So, it was helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Have any questions? Do you have one other document that I brought with me, your abatement budget? I can pass this out.
Please. No.
So, this abatement budget is a tool that Midwest Environmental develops for our clients. So, this is a really a high level planning tool, taking into consideration the positive materials within a survey in the building, as if you were to abate everything that's in that survey. So, this is trying to create the worst case scenario from a planning's perspective. So, this exists as a proof that they get everything out of the building. Based on what is found here, ultimately, for the, you would be removing it's like you have floor tile, mastic, drywall, floor compound inside of full containment. So, you've entered negative pressure, so there's no contamination or exposures outside of those containment areas. Ultimately, you have about eight to 10 days of abatement work to take place.
Does that mean the whole library is shut, closed down for those eight to 10 days?
Based on the locations that you identified, I would recommend, yes.
We would recommend that typically, if that's a possibility. Some communities have different needs of their libraries. Aware that's not always an option to shut down the facility. In the step of a project design, we would come up with that phasing to see if that is a requirement or even a possibility. What's very commonplace is abatements can take place during evening hours when the library is closed to the public. So, you're still going to have licensed abatement company and a project manager here. They are going to have a dumpster on site that would say asbestos contained materials on the dumpster, that's a legal requirement. Optics aren't perfectly desirable, but just things that we have to do and certain protocols. But that can certainly be done at night to help with those optics and certainly not interfere with the community.
The dumpster have a lid?
It'll be closed and locked.
Yeah.
So, the abatement contractor would be the only one that has the lock to that dumpster, excuse me.
And just to confirm, this is the abatement only budget? This is not to put up new drywall? This is not to fix the spaces that were abated?
Right. So, this is to get your asbestos out of the building. This would account for asbestos project management, air testing. So, ensuring that there's no contamination or overexposures inside of the work area, but also because the abatement's done, it's cleaned, and passes an air clearance. Our full transparency, because you are not in a school, you are not legally required to do asbestos project. If you were inside a school, that would be a legal requirement. We do recommend asbestos project management to take place during an abator project, especially in commercial public buildings that are going to be reoccupied. We would invite anybody to bid your project that we wouldn't trust to work in our buildings. But we want to ensure that there's no exposure levels to any of the workers or anywhere else outside of the containment. Not that it would be expected, but make sure the work is carried out on schedule and protect the budget delivered on time. Your asbestos project manager would be like your boots on the ground if you will. They are the person inside your containment running those air samples to tell you what's going on on a daily basis. When you're running a abatement project, only licensed asbestos workers are allowed inside that. So, there is a good deal of trust that has to take place. They can certainly communicate what's happening inside, but you can't go in until it's done. So, we would recommend it, but you are in a no legal obligation to do so.
Based on the total estimate, this does fall above the public bidding threshold, which means we would need to go out for public bid. Currently, state laws say that public bid is required at 25,000 and above. So, whenever the abatement is done, if the abatement is done, or even in part, if the amount is estimated to be 25,000 or more, we would go out for public bid. And MCES, MECS would actually be helping manage that process. And that's what the $2,500 is, to actually work with the library to manage the public bid, work with the contractors, provide the onsite tour. You mentioned all of that. So, that's what that amount is.
So, in that project design line, just as Renee had mentioned, we would develop an abatement scope of work. So, that'd be written text of what needs to be carried out as part of the abatement project. That would be after working with you and the architectural team determine what is coming out. And if they're put into writing, develop similar working schematics that document what areas are being invaded, plans of exit, even to the extent of where the dumpsters located in the project. That is what would the abatement contractors would face their bids on. Where facilitate a pre-bid meeting, leave the scope of work allowed, do a site tour, they take their measurements. They would either mail those sealed bids in here to do a public opening. You can identify afterwards, they've submitted all adaptation requested, everybody's vetted, people have good references, able to do the work, and identify and lowest response to the bidder. So, that, and as your project design, creating the scope of work in a written document, bidding it out to identify who's the most responsible for your project. Project management, air quality testing, that is what would take place during your abatement project. That'd be, they would be there on video on, when they mobilize, bring their equipment on site, the entire time inside containment, running air samples, clearing it, is what they would call it. So, all the abatements done, they cleaned it, air clearances, that passes. Then they generate a clearance letter, ultimately, usually goes to an architect or a demolition contractor. So, if these areas have passed clearance, it's safe for reoccupancy or to continue the next trade. In much more formal language, sorry, that's what comes down. So, your total estimated for your asbestos project design, removal, air testing, would be 38,900 to 46,500, that is estimated with current billing or abatement contractor rates in industry standards.
And you shared with me, you estimate approximately 5% inflation rate per year for every year that this work is not delayed, that's not the right word, but put off until later.
Right. Historically, there are not many non-union abatement contractors in Illinois, but those that are union, you see a rate increase every June. Sometimes that goes from 3% to 5%. I have this something that was designed still in 24. We can still put in the language to bid it out in 2024, to take place in future years, to have the contractor guarantee those rates. That's very common. So, there's, when it comes to bidding, there's some strategy to that seasonality. June, July are tough months, but mostly abatement contractors have done schoolwork because they have X amount of time to take apart and put it back together. But if you can get to bidding out, call it August, September, they're going to get hungrier to fill up their work schedules. You will see a bit more of a good price. It's important to take into consideration.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much for joining us, Robert. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. It's great work. Thank you.
Have an actual copy. Do you want to leave it here?
Um, yes.
Hey.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, again, an important part of the point step we need to take before considering any kind of rework of the building. In addition to the lead paint discussing, we have also conducted water quality and
indoor air quality.
Indoor air quality. So, those two items will be on the agenda for June. Okay. I made election of board officers and section of committee members. I don't recall how we did this before, like did we start with board officers? Did we start with?
Yes.
President? Did we start with treasurer, secretary? Where did we start?
So, I included a copy of the library's governance policy in your board packet so that you could follow along, make sure you're hitting all the committees and all the positions that you need to. So, it would be section six of your board packet. Second page, third page, actually. Second and third page, talk about board officers. Second and third page talk about board officers.
Um let's start with secretary. We'll work our way from secretary on the list if that's all right. Any nominations for the role of secretaries? Okay, trustee George, sir, second. Matt Zoudi, thank you. She's outie. Do, we can do a voice vote, right? Yeah, it's not money, so um do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. All those in favor?
I opposed.
Stay. All right. Thank you, Ally. Appreciate it. Great treasurer. Treasurer. All these people sign, all board officers sign bank cards and we sign checks for the library every month. Um and then the treasurer works closely with Renee on the budget process every year. So we have any nominations for treasurer? Thanks, Bill. Um all those in favor?
I opposed.
Stay. Thank you. That's three years, four years, how many years, treasurer?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's good.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to vice president, assuming the roles of the president when they're not, he or she is not able to preside over the meeting.
I know.
I think you, let's see, Jordan, I'll second. All those in favor?
I opposed.
Stay. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right. President. What can I say? Uh I do. All those in favor?
Sweetie. May, so many mayes opposed.
Okay. All right, so our executive committee, um board officers remain the same every year here.
Uh section one point six in that same committee. Do you need to go through every committee?
Yeah, yeah, so.
But is it motion or is it a?
In in years past, we've done just the committee membership and at the first meeting of that committee, they select a chair person.
Yeah.
And I'm, if you guys want to continue to do that way, that's fine, or we can. Okay.
Is it, but to Alice's question, is it a motion to approve any membership though, or is it just a?
All right, so we'll start with building and grounds. Can I open the floor for self nominations?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um who would like to self nominate to be a part of building and grounds? So Sandy, Jamie, and myself. So anyone else join the party? Never tell them of it.
Never tell them of it.
So uh.
I have motion on the trustee Shaw, Bernie and George to be building any grounds.
We are packaged deal for a second. Thank you, Matt, for the second. All those in favor?
I opposed.
Any mayes or steams? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bylaws and policy. Any self nominations for bylaws and policy? Thank you, Matt. Awesome. Anyone else for bylaws and policy? You, I know you've spoken with Jenny. You'll let us know when, if.
Yes, not yet.
Yep, okay, just turn it out there.
Yes.
All right, I'm open to a motion, a question.
No, I would like to um nominate. Yes, um trustee Friedman, trustee Southie.
Great motion.
All right. Thank you, trustee Jordan. I'll second. All those in favor?
I opposed.
I abstain.
Before we have any motions or self nominations, I do want to say I've spoken with um trustee Jenny Graziano and she is interested in um continuing membership on the engagement committee.
Anyone like to join the engagement committee? All right, uh is there a motion? I hope to nominate trustees Graziano and Jordy. Thank you, trustee Friedman. Trustee Zadi seconds. All those in favor? Opposed. Okay, finance and technology, the dual committee, maybe that was combined this past fiscal year. Are there any self nominations?
Thank you.
Matt? I'll also continue to serve on that committee. Anyone else want to join finance and technology?
I will nominate trustees.
Thank you, trustee Friedman for the nomination or motion. Trustees Jordan seconds. All those in favor?
I opposed.
Abstain.
Before any self nominations, um for nominations for the human resource committee, I spoke with trustee Jenny Graziano and she expressed her interest to continue membership on the H R committee.
Okay, so we have a self nomination through director Grassi for trustee Graziano.
I can't nominate.
No, 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 no.
I was just sharing the information.
That's a self nomination from Jenny.
Which, I can't do that. So I'm just sharing the information for someone to nominate her, even though she's not here. But thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to nominate Jenny and also self nominate for H R.
I'm not gonna join H R this year. Anyone else wants to join H R? All right, open to a motion then?
I will nominate trustees Graziano and George to serve the resources committee.
Okay, thank you, trustee Friedman. Is there a second? Bill Hayes has seconded. All those in favor?
I opposed.
Stay. That brings us to intergovernmental committee, which is an interesting one.
Technically, um the description right now is not accurate because we don't have a current I G A. Um however, the museum and the library have both expressed their continued interest in meeting and will continue doing so until despite, you know, through the process of creating a new I G A with the village. And so I think the next upcoming meeting is planned is in the fall. So there would only be one person um who would be representative from the library to the intergovernmental committee. We're just keeping the name for now. Even though right now it really is the museum and the library until later, uh details are finalized with the I G.
Uh is there a library trustee who'd like to serve on the intergovernmental committee?
I will be happy to.
Thank you for the self nomination, Jamie.
I will nominate um trustee George to be on that.
That says self nomination. No, that was a motion. That was a motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zoudi. All those, and you, Jamie, except she self nominated. Give me a second on processing. All of them in favor?
I.
Opposed. I abstain. Okay. Last one, long range planning committee. Would anyone like to self nominate? I will also self nominate. Any like, anyone like to join the long range planning committee? Point ones. Twice, okay. I'm open to a motion then.
I will uh be willing to nominate trustee Freeman and trustee Shaw.
Thank you, trustee George. Is there a second? Thank you, trustee Jordan. All those in favor? Opposed. I think we've had only a small change in committee membership, the leading H R.
Yes, that's about it. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Excellent. We are cruising tonight.
All right.
Sometimes it's takes. Yes. All right, we are on approval of library board meeting minutes. We have both April and May. In in May, we didn't have a form of people who were in attendance in April to approve them. So. Um and May was our special board meeting, earlier meeting. Would anyone like to move to approve April sixteen? We'll do April sixteen first. Section seven. I'll move to approve the April sixteen minutes. Thank you, trustee Zadi. All those in favor?
I opposed.
And excuse me, I misspoke. We are in May. We are reviewing the ones per usual. I was thinking we had two months work, but we really have the April and the discussion, the special. All right, that takes us to the special meeting on May ninth. In regard to the um allegation of negotiations with the village on the I G A. Uh there was need to accept. Thank you, trustee George, for the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Thank you, trustee Jordan. All those in favor? I opposed. Danny, Bill, yes, you were here.
I think possibly Sandy need to abstain from the April.
Oh, yes. All right, we'll go back to April. I motion to approve the April meeting minutes. So we need a different second, please. Thank you, trustee Zoudi. All those in favor still?
I.
We have one abstain on the April. Bill abstained on the special meeting. All right. Eight forty five. Really flies when you're having fun. Um Renee, your update, please.
Thank you. I will continue with a quick clip of things and highlight the highlights. Um we have two uh fantastic part-time shelvers at the library, both of which, both of whom are graduating Lake Forest High School this year. Um so we posted um and interviewed for two part-time shelvers. Um I did provide additional context in the director's report about how these individuals who are graduating were actually trained to work desk prior to my starting here. Um that will not happen going forward. The job will be primarily in only shelving. The job description is created as such. Um the reason those hours were not backfilled is because those two part-time uh shelvers were not available on the evenings and the days to add those hours back in after we started pilot. So when we close on Sundays, those were their regular shifts. Um and so that is why there will be a backfilled associate position um to take over those hours that we technically lost as a library in January when the pilots started and those shelvers couldn't take on additional hours when they were doing three or four A P classes and couldn't work um on the weekends as they normally were scheduled to. But um for a variety of reasons, including um labor laws, uh this is an important change um to make sure that we have uh the correct staff working at the correct time uh to follow those laws. So um that is the context of that. Happy answering questions. Um I'm very pleased to say that um our full, our um cataloging librarian has returned to their full hours. Um and lots of staff uh have helped with that transition. Um and then additionally, in under the administration section, um I have been working with the management team and others to revitalize our um statistics sheet that we keep at the desk to keep track of how much work we do, how many people we interact with, how many questions we answer. That data is used for annual ifwar report through the state library. That's what makes us eligible for funding. Um and there was a lot of improvement to do, um definitions to clarify, some streamlined changes to make. Um and I'm very happy that we have um a new process which will then inform changes that you will see starting next month in our statistics report in the board packet. So you will see things like how many questions did we answer at the desks? That's another data point that can show how busy we are, how many room reservations we've had. Um we're gonna create a dashboard for passports and notaries. So all the data um is easily found in one place. So um huge, huge work, huge lift. Thank you all to who helped make it happen. Um page, at the second page of my director's report, I wanted to um talk about two things, one of which is the first bullet point, the T-Mobile grant. Um at the time of writing this report, I had not heard from T-Mobile about the status of our grants. Um but actually, we heard yesterday. Um we were not accepted for this grant. Um they had over, I believe, five hundred applications and they were only able to accept twenty five. Um I just want to acknowledge and thank um trustee Friedman who helped with that application. And I've already started researching other technology grant opportunities to see not only how can we use this plan that we put forth in that grant or potentially another grant award. So um onward and upward, as they say. Um the second bullet I wanted to talk about was the um review meeting that of all of the applications for the accessibility grant through the state of Illinois library. We were invited, the library was invited to attend an open review of all the applications. Um during that meeting, I learned that um of all of the public library construction grant applications this year, it was a total of approximately one point seven million dollars of funding requested. The state librarian, um Alexi Genoulias and his team only had approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fund those projects. So I mean, more, almost twice, more than twice the amount was requested and um less than half will be able to be funded. Even so, our library fared really well in the review. Um we got a perfect score um in addition to a score of ninety five and ninety eight from three of the members who reviewed our application. Um I want to thank uh Ally who volunteered to attend the meeting as well since she helped plan that application. Um one of our scores was a seventy five and I just want to open the floor to any feedback or additional comments um that Ally might want to make about um the process.
Uh sure. It was a fascinating process uh during which you call in and they have already pre-written your application, scored it on a rubric and then they uh have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicants and we can respond. They can then revise their scores.
Quick question, were all of the reviewers present for this meeting?
Yes. Virtually.
Yes. Um so they were able to give like immediate feedback, clarifications. We witnessed a few times where they asked a question and somebody clarified and they changed their score, always for the better. I didn't.
No.
Worse. Uh I will say there was a wild card reviewer and in, as far as I could like interpret here I did sit through all of the applications with Renee so we could hear Renee stated on even longer to hear the other grant opportunities. Um there was no feedback given by the person throughout the seventy five. Uh so it was like a very big discrepancy between the minority of the reviewers and this particular person. Uh I will say there's like a little bit of concern and they do open for feedback. I would gladly provide this feedback to them about selecting panelists where um, believe he was an architect.
He was the only architect.
The only architect of the firm that is not the firm that we had quoted, provided proposals from that there could be a conflict of interest when it comes to potential like business practice. Um in terms of like, if it is a competitor to that person, um there's a little, when you're talking about a, a building specific grant, um felt like maybe that's an consideration.
And he, and his architectural firm was one of the um And he, and his architectural firm was one of the firms for one of the applications. For this grant during which he had to abstain, but even the fact that his firm was up for nomination. And potentially even helped with the application. We were texting a lot and we had similar feelings.
Yeah. So it was definitely, there's flaws to that process for sure, it was interesting to sit through it, I think we have a good idea of what it looks like before and. We did not get any meaningful feedback from that person on why he provided that and they do send you the rubrics after the fact from each of the reviewers, have you received it?
Of which I still have not received it despite two emails.
So they will send you each reviewer's rubric, so we can hopefully see where he came to that conclusion, with all that being, you know, said, it can be. Very, like, oh, you answered my question, I'm revising my score from a fifty-five to a ninety, like, there was some of that.
It was the second.
For us. Now, he just threw out a number and didn't say anything.
No.
And I will say actually the most, I would say the harshest critic is the one who gave us the hundred. Right, or the ninety. She was like one of the most. Like, I think she was kind of the most discerning of them and she gave us the highest score and then he. Was on the opposite side, so we're just trying to figure out where that came from, we don't have answers there. They also, after they provide their numbers, will vote to fund or not fund, and there were some projects that received like. You know, low seventies or your, your application was incomplete was the feedback and then voted to fund it. So like, there isn't a lot, it's a little hard to tell where there's like a true adherence. To a process where it was transparent in terms of how they did it, the logic behind it is, is not clear.
And refresh my memory, is, was this a max fifty thousand ask?
Okay, so. Matching funds, we would have to contribute the other.
And we have a plan, some of which was the village, of which is, yes, so, but this is the forty-five thousand. I will add in addition to this, a couple of, actually it was only a week later. Alexi Genulia, state librarian, had a call with Illinois State Library Directors, he does this every once in a while to get feedback, it's a thirty minute. You know, questions, answers directly to the state librarian, I attended. My, my first question was about the legislation about banning book bans, but my second question after Alexi left the meeting after ten minutes. Was actually about the funding, I said, you know, I just went through this process, it was my first time. I was really shocked at how much funding is available considering how much more funding is being requested. They said that that was an astute, you know, assessment and they're going to look at redistributing how much money. I mean, it's what they said, but they're going to look at how much money is redistributed to this particular grant in the future. It was incredibly helpful for me to attend because this is also the same grant that if we were to apply for. The state libraries, other public library construction grants with more funds available to us, it's the same process, I stayed on the whole meeting. And I saw all of those other libraries present. And so I wrote down a lot of things that they liked and made notes so that I could keep that in mind for future. Some libraries actually had their architects present in case there were questions. And I couldn't, we couldn't talk, we could only answer questions if we were spoken to, so there was no. You know, promotion of your application, it was really just a discussion for the panel or for the committee.
But I do. Yeah, we did, we got overwhelmingly like your, your application was very clear, very comprehensive feedback. What another trend we did note is that libraries that had just recently received a large sum of money through a competitive grant application. One of them was Schaumberg, I believe.
And they got two perfect scores.
And they got, they. They were noted, who just got a lot of money to do a project and then would receive. Overwhelmingly positive scores and it was really interesting to see the vote to fund libraries that have had a large share of the funding in Illinois. Recent funding and libraries who have not had access to any of that funding being skewed.
The question was, will this project continue regardless of if the funding is provided and the big libraries Arlington Heights Schaumberg said yes.
Because we have money.
So I certainly have feedback as well, and I yet have still heard and will be following up with another email.
That sounds contradictory to your point here, priority for grants would be given to libraries who are not recipients in twenty-one.
Completely in contradiction.
Absolutely, yeah. Like I said, we were texting a lot.
It was a fascinating process.
When do you think we'll know?
We were supposed to.
To have known already.
So there's no correlation between the score and.
It did not seem to be, or vote to fund or not fund, then it goes to Alexi Genullius's office who then takes those.
Makes the final.
And makes the final decision.
And so some, some were voted to fund at that, at that meeting.
They all vote to recommend or not, so they all, everyone's application either received a fund or not fund with a, with an individual score than a composite score. But then Alexi Genullius makes the ultimate decision.
So we were voted to fund.
Yeah, yes.
Vote to fund, it was just the way that the scoring was done is, is a little.
Yeah, our composite score was a B plus, ninety-two out of a hundred. It would have been higher if we would have known or understood, I think, some of the challenges from the seventy-five raider, but.
Seem consistent in.
No.
Agreed to.
A Russian judge. A Russian judge.
It was.
You know, that's just, that's just the throwback to. The nineteen eighty whatever Olympics.
Some of the, the ones that like they said, this application was incomplete, gave like a ninety-two.
It was shocking.
And then other folks were like, no, this is like, you did not submit a portion of the application, like, you got a sixty-five.
It was shocking.
He was like. So, there was a lot of like. If one score out of four judges can like tank.
Yes.
You know, like that's, and so it was interesting to see that play out across many applications, so. If we have more clarity or I think it'll be interesting to see his rubric.
He has been on the committee for a while. I looked back a couple of years.
I'd like to, I also thank Ally and Renee who attended this meeting while she was on vacation. And clearly took copious notes.
Yes, but I, all to help us in the future.
Thank you. Thank you both.
So, um, anything else with the director's report that I wanted to highlight, oh. Eclipse glasses, this will come up a couple of times in our statistics and the heat map. But in April, we distributed a total of over fourteen hundred solar eclipse glasses to the community. We had a line outside of the door on the day where glasses were to be picked up. Which I loved telling the village board and Drew about when Sandy and I went to present during National Library Week. It was a huge community service, it started with a grant from the Illinois State Library, our per capita grant funded us to acquire all of these glasses. Not every library in the community had glasses, and we were one that brought in people from different communities. But also a majority, vast majority of them were Lake Bluff, we distributed them through partners such as Forrest Bluff, thank you to Ally or whoever. Promoted it there, Jenny promoted it to the park districts, the village, the chamber. And, you know, I think something like that was a once in a decade experience and I'm really proud that we did that, Jill. Coordinated it all and was on leave during the eclipse, but what I will say is it was her as well as Katie and Eliza who. Really helped make it happen, trained staff, wrote procedures, communicated daily changes for pickups and all of that, it was a. It was a group effort and everyone did fantastic, it was a huge success. Happy to answer any questions from my report, statistics, I have to say, visits were up. Program attendance was up and as you can see, the website connection was fixed in the report, but I still have yet to go back and change those other two months. Net two community is our website vendor who I've been working with closely. To help me with the website in lieu of Martha's leave. So. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The catalog.
Yes.
Down, is there a quick fix that we just don't have, haven't had money for, but maybe now with the new budget here?
I would love to defer it to Katie to answer, who has been managing this.
And to, since we had a couple of catalog related issues, because where it's been crashing for. A period of a few hours and coming back.
Yeah, and what it looks like as a user is you enter something and you just get nothing, right?
Yes. Um, so. Yeah, so the, the issue with the.
Website.
Yeah. Well, the, the issue with, there's the issue of the mobile use of not being able to search the catalog, yeah, that has been. That I believe, it sounds like it has been fixed.
So.
Connected Net two, uh, Net two community with innovative who manages Sierra and Anhor, which, which is our catalog. We had to connect them because there were some, there were some pieces of code or something that the web team needed. In order to make that change, that sounds like they have fixed that.
No, I checked today, this was the problem, Matt, that you and I, you showed me, and it was an issue that we had had last fall. And we had thought we fixed, but then it came up again, so. Our website vendor had to interface with our catalog vendor because the two of those products or those tools aren't working together, so. It's still not, it's not fixed, yes.
But it is in process.
Yeah, they just got connected, Katie helped connect them.
Yeah, yeah, they have, they, they have been connected and the innovative team did send them the information. Even a whole, hopefully that would be fixed. But we have, we did also have periods in the last month where the catalog would crash, we have, we're working on a. One of our staff numbers, you know, kind of project that required, you know, to check links in our online book lists to the catalog records. But you keep it open, a few of them, and then all of a sudden it was like the catalog wound, it would be down for a few hours and then it would fix itself. Thankfully, that is, we identified what the problem is, it has nothing to do exactly with the catalog, but a piece of software that we've been using. Or the link that we're using to link to the individual books in our book list. It's, it's an easy fix on our end, I believe he was able to take care of all of that today, it's just modifying the links that we use to. So, if he clicks on a book, oh, so the catalog record is just a modification of that link, there were a bunch to go over, but he has fixed that, I think that should take care of the problem.
I'll add, thank you Katie for that incredibly thorough explanation, I will add two more pieces of context. We host our website ourselves, we don't have a full-time webmaster. Technology support has always been part of someone else's job. And so there is more growing need for technology support infrastructure in the library. And something like, you know, with a lot of what Martha has been doing to support the website, you know. She has learned incredible amounts of website work and coding and also when she gets to her stopping point, she reaches out to Net two community who helps. They have a very pricey hourly fee and invoice that you will see next month. If we had, you know, someone on site that had more knowledge of coding, we could potentially even. Make those changes better in-house, but we don't currently, also we host our own catalog, we are not, we are standalone library. We are not a member of CCS and CCS members paid to be a part of that consortium and they manage that online catalog for the libraries who are members. So not only does, is there added work on our small library for hosting our website. We don't have the infrastructure support that the libraries who participate in CCS do for supporting their catalog when things like this happen. And so I think those are two important pieces of information that just add more context to when things like this happen and in our ability to turn around a solution.
So, that's a lot about kind of the library side of it. I'm concerned about the patron side of it, it's sort of like. That's entry level, like you want your community to be able to see what's in stock, industry, right?
That is something we talked about at length, I've had conversations with the managers, I'm, I was the one who identified the issue back in the fall with the website and the mobile. And also if we're not providing the best customer service we can and not even making our catalog available. We're missing incredible opportunities, people aren't going to try again.
So when it goes down, do you find the phone calls increase because people call you to find out if something's available in the collection?
No. It's hard to say, I'm. Since I'm, I'm not at the depth as much as the part-time staff, I have not, I have not noticed an increase or heard of an, staff reporting any increase. What we do get is an increase in people in the building who would normally use the catalog themselves, either looking it up on their phone or using our. Public computer, public catalog station on the main floor. They, you know, they will, a number of them will come to the desk and usually it's like, something's coming up with the catalog. And we are able to look it up for them like through the backend through our integrated library software. So we can tell them, we can still tell them if a book is in, but yeah, having the catalog, having the catalog out is definitely. Definitely a very significant obstacle to providing base suppliers.
I want to thank Katie because Katie is doing more than just her job right now with Martha on leave, normally catalog management is handled by both Katie and Martha. All, all managers have had to take on more additional responsibilities and that has affected our ability to move things forward. And also. I have taken on a significant amount of technology support. I, I just want to say, we're doing the best that we can and we do understand that customer service experience is number one. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to have it on the agenda for our next finance IT committee so we can just keep tabs on it, I know it's not for a number of weeks yet, because we already met this month.
What is the, what is the agenda item so I can prepare?
The catalog, online catalog.
I don't have an update since that is pretty operational and user experience, so I can share that information if that's. Their obligation is to support us when we have questions with the website. They do the coding, they run the backend and we don't ask them anything or we don't get charged for anything until we ask them questions. So I have relied on them more so the last month or two because I don't have the skills and knowledge. For coding on the website and run, have run into some issues that I wasn't able to solve, and so I defer to them. They are a consulting service, they have a variety of team members and they have access to our website and they also provide training. For staff, of which I will be interested to do that. At some point. I can show, I can share that contract with you if you'd like. That's exactly what I've been doing, you're absolutely right, and so that's what I've been trying to do, and so as Katie described. This particular issue was something they had not seen before and so they needed to get into our catalog coding, which is why. We had to connect one vendor to another, Net two community had a conference for a week, I mean, I could go into all that, but like. So they're connected now and they're talking to each other, which is ideally what we need to have happen. No, thank you.
Thanks. Right, so Renee, you had mentioned the big fix on the statistics report, was there anything else on statistics?
No, I was ready to answer any questions about the director's report.
Right. Any other questions about the director's report? Seeing your questions, we're on to the financial reports.
This is the last month of the fiscal year. End of April is the end of the fiscal year, you will see property taxes are nearly a hundred percent. We had one more payment of PPRT, I was happy to receive that. We did receive some impact fees, if you see, and under miscellaneous, under revenue, Naperville impact fees, that is. As we learned Bonnie and I from John Beeler, this is a very inconsistent revenue stream. That is not always annual, you're nodding your head, Janie must remember. So this is associated with any reassessment or new development, and so. For example, Drew and I spoke on the phone, he talked about Stonebridge, if that were to ever come to fruition. At the end of that project, there would be a reassessment and potentially more impact fees related to that. And since those are inconsistent across the fiscal year, we can't always know what revenue we'll be receiving from that, but.
We were happy to.
We were happy to receive it for sure. And interest is over two hundred percent expected for the year. Regarding expenditures. We were low with IMRF, I have to say. I need to check with Bettina, it's quite low. Based on when we were budgeting last year, but then again, last year I budgeted maybe only two weeks into the job, so I don't know why IMRF is running that low. It's possible there's another final invoice that needs to be assessed in the next month, but. The line items that have been high are high, staff have been doing a great job with their final ordering. And as you can see at the end of April. This report was. This report was, um, was run based on invoices that were processed May eighth. We still have the next month to back pay to the fiscal year for any invoices that come in. Um, May one to May thirty-one. And then, um, the audit report is done after the books close. But as you can see, of, at the bottom of the last page of the expenditure report, um. Where, yeah, um, we're looking at. All total revenues, total expenditures, the very bottom of all the pages. Um, you can see we are a hundred and five point three five percent revenue received. Um, and expenditures that actually includes the twenty thousand put in the, um. Reserve. Um, even though we thought we would overspend, we, I, we actually didn't, um, for a variety of reasons, but. Um, there's still more to be charged to this fiscal year and we'll get the final numbers at the audit. Bill, do you have anything else to add since this is kind of more end of year look?
Yeah, that's, yeah, whatever, like you said, for the invoices from May to the thirty-first, they'll go in there. I think that's a lot of amount going to the, into the reserves.
Right, it's, and it won't be that because we still have more invoices to pay. But as you mentioned, in a recent finance or board meeting, consider it being the PPRT, I mean, the PPRT itself.
That was the big. So from a budgeting standpoint, it should be fairly close, uh, to what we, we put the budget together, the PPRT money coming in.
It's the overage, yeah. Happy to answer any question.
If there are no questions, we're open to a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Matt, Sally, Trusty Daddy. A roll call.
Trusty Shaw.
I.
Trusty Church.
I'm Trusty Journey.
I'm Trusty Daddy.
Or Trusty please.
Bye.
Trusty Friedman, hi.
The eyes have it. So now we're talking about the checks for the month of April.
So one check that you will see that is extremely high, but is not being charged to the last fiscal year, it's actually being charged for this new one that we're in. Is on the, um, second to last page of the check dispersal report. Um. It is Innovative Interfaces Inc. That's our annual, um, payment for our automation system, our catalog. What staff used to search.
Maybe we shouldn't say it, sorry.
Right, no, I know. Um, I, I hear you. It's a really high price, even though I, um, we negotiated for a three-year at that lower price, but no, I know. Um, it's hefty. So this check is to be our annual payment, our renewal for, um, the new fiscal year. And since we're already in May, we're technically issuing checks for both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. We got our first invoice for the master plan project from Enberg Anderson, the twenty-eight hundred fifty-seven. That's what that is.
Any questions about the checks? There are no questions. Is there a motion to approve checks one, five, nine, nine, five, three, and one, six, oh, three, oh? And some, thank you, Trusty Church. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Trusty Hayes. Roll call, please.
Trusty Shaw.
I.
Trusty Church.
I'm Trusty Journey.
Trusty Daddy or Trusty Hayes.
Bye.
See you, Friedman, hi.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Takes us to committee reports. We'll start with intergovernmental.
Wow. What do we think of what? What to say about our intergovernmental meeting? Um. We met. And we really chose not to join us. Thanks of the IGA, but first you expect, even though. We had invited Bettina and she, I've been planning on coming, she was asked not to come. And, uh, so we really laid our case out to, uh. The two representatives from history Sam. And Bonnie was also there as an observer. Uh. And both agreed to push. The village to get it with IGA, which they did do and we got. An IGA, uh, first draft, never less than true with it.
I do want to acknowledge Trusty Graziano, who was the one who brought that up in the first place at the last board meeting. We need to. Think about the museum as a partner with the library. And so I think that was a really important suggestion to the board and I appreciate you, Jamie.
Well, it was, it was really great that, that they advocated, they, they need to advocate for us because there has not always been that. Much cooperation. And I will say as, as an addendum to that. Uh, it was the next day or two, it wasn't. I, I can't remember the time period, but it was less than whatever it was, but I was at a history museum board meeting. And, um, I was asked to, at that coordination, to report on this. Uh, IGA meeting and I said what had happened and, and, uh. The people on the board were very interested in what was going on and asked me a lot of questions and I explained. Uh, how we had had to, um. Really make a case to Regis and to the board as a whole when the PPRT thing came up. Because we were getting a little bit, uh. Sidelined by the village administrator and. This seems to be happening, uh, again, and, uh. They, they were just very shocked, I think, at the museum to hear. That our, uh. For the last twenty-five years, our financial involvement with the village was so murky. And so unclear and, uh. I, I, I really feel that they are starting to realize that we share a building with them and it's to. It's to the advantage of the museum to help out the library to get some of the stuff done. The which, because village is quite frankly acting in some pretty adversarial ways. Anything else you want to say?
Uh, the request for parking space.
Ah, yes, thank you. Um, the one thing that, uh. The museum folks and it was Kathy, uh, Kathy O'Hara and Martha Jordan. Uh, said that was that they were always surprised. I, I could add to it, too, but, um, that in the old IGA, they were never given a parking space out there. There was never one, one spot designated for the museum and we said that we would bring it. Over to the meeting, see what we thought. Uh, you are probably, should I break up the?
I think that's going to come up under the IGA update, the others, but I, I would add to say the museum, um. Requested a parking space be considered for, uh, the museum because of accessibility reasons for some of their elderly volunteers. Um, yes, the conversation went beyond that, but that is the main request that Jamie wanted to represent here tonight.
Yes.
And do you, you were at the meeting to observe. Do you have anything to add?
I was at the meeting to observe, um. Um, you know, I, I was a silent observer, uh, so I was not an active participant. We spoke about the request during the next building and grounds, I think.
We did.
Yeah, a request from the museum. And I think we have a recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee for the full board.
Right, yeah.
So when we get there, um. Jamie can, can talk about the, the outcome of the Building and Grounds Committee discussion on this parking spot request from the museum.
We'll help you.
Thank you. All right. And the, the intergovernmental committee, they've agreed to meet in September, is the next.
Oh, they did. Well, no, we all agree.
In the fall, sorry, in the fall, and I think I just put in my head September, in the fall, yeah.
I know that I had spoken with you about, I, I, I would kind of like to wait to have a, another meeting until we have. Some sort of, if I G A worked out, agree with both parties. I thought that made sense.
An IGA with the museum.
With all three parts. Well, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, we, we need to, you and Ally are still going to be working on the IGA with the village. And it seemed to me that it would be counterproductive to have another IGA meeting facility. Get that negotiated in our. And we have a, approved by the general library. So I haven't, I haven't done anything since that.
All right. Finance and technology.
Man, last week, we, we kind of, we covered a number of topics and some we've already covered today, but. Um, first part of the meeting, we had, uh, Jamie Rackland here to sort of chat to us about. Um, as a follow-up to the, um, retreat that, that, that occurred a few months ago. And, and some of his insights were, um, you know, district versus, um, ethnic libraries versus. Kind of the position we're in now. Other parts were, what is a typical percentage that your tax bill has for the library? And he told us it's somewhere between two and three percent. We use Bonnie's tax bill as a sample, and we're a little over two point two percent, um, on, on, on that, but. That's basically where the, the, the numbers come from. And then obviously some villages and cities. Have a big commercial base where they're able to, their two and three percent is a lot more money. Uh, but everything is based on the total EAB, um, as far as what that number is going to look like. Uh, so again, it's sort of an open discussion, looking at if we were going to. Uh, an option to generate bonds and have debt service. Uh, these are all options as far as what we want to do as far as improvements to the, to the building and how we fund that. And, and we discussed the, the option of a, of a one-time levy to, to take that increase up. And, and then obviously we have that money kind of go from the board and then we have smaller levies as, as we sort of go, go through the, uh, subsequent years. So I think, uh, we, we, we discussed that we'll have our master plan together sometime in the fall. Uh, January timeframe, we'll, we'll know kind of where, where we're going to be. We did talk about, we probably want to need to know a little bit maybe earlier so that if we need to request a higher levy, then we would. Need to sort of do that, because I think that's when we have to sort of go to the library, uh, go to the, from the library to do the, uh, build for.
It might be tight in terms of the timeframe. You know, the building, the master plan project with Enberg Anderson will wrap up in the fall. And then that's just the building, so if we want to talk about. Any changes for operations, you know, Jamie at the retreat kind of talked about both of those categories. We'd want to do some projections with Jamie all before possibly December when we have to tell the village, so. You know, there would be some strategy for the board at the end of this year to decide. You know, do we have the numbers we need? What do we do for this first year? Do we wait all of that to come?
So sort of a, a, a note of discussion of, of options that, that we can kind of look at, uh, going forward. Um, the, the, we did talk, uh, uh, within the room on the IGA, and we're going to talk about that a bit later, uh. And some options there. At that time, the village was looking to try and get something done quickly. Uh, and we talked about some options about having a little open, maybe with an add-on in the back or something to that effect, that would allow us to come back. Then for improvements to the buildings to that. So maybe we'll have that pass the discussion in the IGA. Third item we looked at was the, uh, Fainham proposal, which we've sort of gone through, uh, with, uh, Robert this morning, this afternoon. And then, uh, the last action item was to approve, um, the, uh, part-time from eighteen to twenty-four hours. Uh, with the, uh, that was the youth, um, position there.
We will have an upcoming staffing change later this summer with a potential move. Um, at least either to retirement or to another position, to the substitute position. Either way, we will have to fill backfill that position. So the request was to, um. With the hopes of, uh, bringing forward more qualified candidates, um, the position was approved by the finance committee to be, um. Increased hours from eighteen to twenty-four with IMRF benefits. So thank you so much, finance.
Next, engagement committee.
The man, very briefly, um, because we've decided to put the, um, onboarding on the back burner a little bit. Because we really want to talk about engaging with the community and get out there and let the community know what's going on. So our first meeting, this meeting's changed a lot. I'm going to talk to them about, um. Visual assignment and stuff that we're getting money from them or become more media compliant, which.
But their focus is to support people with visual disabilities and so. We're coming up with some proposals that already fit into what we need, um, after the assessment to potentially fund some approvals there.
Renee's going to go, I am, she's going to educate me on how to like give, you know, proposals to them.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, Sandy. Um, that brings us to long-range plan. I'm the chair there. Um, so Ally and I met the week that Renee was on vacation. Um, we revised, or we revisited, I should say, the timeline for issuing an RFP. Or, um, profession doesn't help us with the long-range plan. Um, we assigned different sections of the RFP to the three of us. Um, so. Now Renee knows when she goes on vacation, she gets more assignments.
It seems that way, does it? I just will go on vacation.
Just kidding. Um. Yeah, so. And did I miss anything, Ally?
Um, you know, that was it, but we did, uh, change our next meetings, but I don't know if we want our next.
Yeah, yeah, June. Um, any questions for long-range planning? Hey, that brings us back to around to building and grounds.
Okay, well, the Building and Grounds Committee discussed a lot of things that, um. We didn't go into a lot of detail within the minutes because there were some. Interesting topics. Um. And it was. About the issue of, largely about parking lot again, um, and the. Once again, the grab that, that let's just try to do to open up a parking lot, to make it working. We have very good reasons for choosing. Or asking that not to be done, first of all. The most compelling one, I think, is that we are still in the pilot program. And we may go back to being open four nights a week. And, uh, and if that's the case, having that as public is not a good idea. They want to, uh. And uh, and if that's the case, having that as public is not a good idea, they want to uh. I think they're they're really angry, especially as we're coming into summer, having open weekends, but we're also open. I think it's a slippery slope to open at certain hours, because once people start parking there, they stop and look at the sign and say. You know, oh gee, this is not public parking during this time, you know? And um I, we're we're also curious as to how much of. The the police would be willing to take it, people that they report to. So, so that um, that is something that still has to be. Dealt with. Should I talk about the possibility of using a a given one part handicap space?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we um, as as part of our site assessment and accessibility assessment. Um, we only have the one handicap spot out front. Um, we were. Thinking about uh making one of the spots out back handicap for staff. But that would mean that we would lose one spot.
True.
We have to take one spot to be the, where you open the door, although I was looking at that the other day and. Room in there, but that's another topic. And um, and we were going to ask maybe the village to consider putting another. Definitely adding one more spot on Scranton, either on this side or on the back side as handicap. It's something that that's necessary, so. Um, so we're going to remind you of something.
Yes, I think, you know, with regard, you brought up a couple of things, the fact that the library's accessibility report. Said we need to increase parking and we need to increase accessibility, accessible parking, not just for staff, which. This library used to have an accessible parking space for staff in this lot. Several years ago, the blacktop got repaved or redone, and that, and a decision was made to not have it. Um, staff have told me that back then story.
Yes, I thought we actually, did we actually add, were we?
I think a spot was added because of the tree.
If we added a spot, but it was designed, we don't have designated.
There there used to be a designated, yes, I'll see, I just I think that.
So I think the go forward around the parking was a deter, well, a a go forward regarding the museum request. Um, was uh stated by the, voted on by the Building and Grounds Committee.
He, to bring it, to bring it to the.
Sorry, so the the, what I recall the motion was, was that we, as a Building and Grounds Committee, considered. The museum request for space. And given a number of variables around, the number of staff in the building at any given time is to be determined. We've increased with the building specialists, we have in our uh substitute librarian position. There's, so there are pieces moving, and in general, the number of people that we're going to have in in the building, the staff is increasing. Number two, most other libraries um have. Uh, adjacent parking for their employees. As well as their patrons. As well as your patrons, um, the, the request for the museum. Uh, our our hours are to be determined, we may be open till nine o'clock again, four nights a week, so. Allowing access to the parking while we're handling our hours and increasing our staff makes no sense. That doesn't mean it couldn't be considered at some point in the future, but the recommend, the recommendations. Um, and the motion in Building and Grounds was that the library request that the village create a second. Handicap parking space on Scranton or on Oak, wherever it makes the most sense, for not only. Museum volunteers, museum guests, library patrons. It would serve everyone. Um, if there was more appropriate number of accessible parking spaces around our.
And what the library, and what the library intends to do regardless of all of that, is to. Add an accessible parking spot in our staff. Lot, because we need one um at any point, and a staff member could um enter into a disability. And we would need to provide that, um, so that needs to be addressed by us internally. Um, and then the request would be to the village to add another accessible spot for the public. Satisfying the museum's request.
And no problems, any further questions from the full board? On the. Museum request for parking. Any further comments, considerations you think we should take?
Seems to be like until the I G A is solidified, I think, what. Parking lot situation sort of the, that's the criteria is of.
All right. Thank you, Building and Grounds. Takes us to new business, new business. So discussion regarding board meeting schedule and meeting efficiency ideas, I'm going to focus on the board meeting schedule piece of this. There are other boards um that exist, municipal boards, uh academic. University boards that don't meet every month. And. I know we've had a couple of special meetings this year, this past fiscal year. Um, my thinking is that. The board may want to consider a one time or perhaps. Uh, longer standing change and not have a meeting in December. This December, and instead accelerate January's meeting from the third week to the second week. So that if there is any time sensitive business, we can get to it uh in the second week of January.
And this is custom for other libraries, I worked at Glencoe Library, and they would regularly not host a meeting in um August. To provide vacation time for um residents and trustees, and then December was sometimes canceled as well. So there is precedent.
Is uh fewer meetings, does that impact your ability, Renee, to move forward with things, thinking about checks?
It would change things just for that month, nothing that we couldn't make adjustments to, for sure. So for example, one change we did was Laurence was on vacation the week before the board meeting this month. And so we just closed the books essentially, and had invoices done and prepared before she left. That's why you'll see the report was run and make the check report was made, which is way earlier than it usually is, is. Why you sign checks at the special meeting, um, so we would do something similar to that, which is no problem.
So just to be clear, you're not looking to necessarily eliminate the August meeting, but just.
I would say that's also on the table is, you know, if we as a board want to reconsider the July or August meeting. Because again, I know of boards, I Renee mentioned August, I know boards that don't need it in July. Because a lot of people do go on extended vacations with their families. School age children, school age grandchildren, what have you, in in July. I think July is more common in our community than August, because we have a August, whatever, eighteen seventeen start date.
And just come back for athletics and stuff.
Right. So just, just um putting it out there, you know, open to discussion and or a motion.
Yeah, it would be B, so any changes we made to the schedule would fall under the motion for B.
I'll motion to cancel January, uh cancel December of twenty twenty three and advance January. Sorry, twenty twenty four.
I know.
And advance January of twenty twenty five. To the second Tuesday. Okay, so motion by Shaw, seconded by Church. Do people have any questions they want to ask before we vote?
For discussion.
For discussion. Okay, um, we can voice vote this. All those in favor? I oppose. I'm staying. Okay, we will have our meeting Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. It's the second Tuesday, first one is the seventh. And we will not have a December twenty twenty four meeting.
And I will follow up, making those changes on the website and so forth. And the calendar.
Yeah.
So it's January, it's very January, what day?
Yeah.
Fourteen. I did, I looked it up earlier, but please double check.
Yeah.
She never know. Um, are there any other um? Items regarding our full board monthly meeting schedule that people want to discuss? Is anyone known to be absent in July? You might be absent. The sixteenth is the third week I will be here. The next week, November. Let me say this in regard to meeting efficiency, anyone has any ideas, please send them to me, just to me, just. Just to me, don't copy everybody, because I think that's an OMA violation.
It could be.
Or you can send them to Renee if you want to.
Please, yeah.
You know, to be, to Renee, remain anonymous. One thing that Renee and I have talked about is, do we potentially do committee of the whole meetings? So that we don't go in detail on something both at committee and at the full board meeting. So hopefully that, that could reduce some redundancies, what I don't know is. If six o'clock committee in a whole meeting with a seven o'clock start is possible for those who commute.
Another option would be to have a committee at the whole meeting on a different day, but then that adds into the meeting, so.
We will have a committee at a whole meeting next year when uh instead of having an H R finance combined meeting for the director's review. It'll be a committee at a whole meeting, that was a recommended change from the H R committee. We'll definitely get that one. Okay, ideas, please forward them. New business I M C, update on the I G A. So um, the letter that's in the packet was sent to Regis. Drew and the entire village after I had a phone conversation with Regis to give him a heads up. What we were going to say and why we were saying it. And on the sixteenth, we actually worked to try to find a date earlier than the June dates that are in the, in the letter. Unfortunately, the one or two dates that we, that worked for the library team. To meet were not, were not um possible for. Um, wasn't possible for us to both. Have a planning meeting for the three of us. And meet with the village prior to Memorial Day. Two out of the five people who are negotiating are going to Europe in the next few weeks. Um, so we're looking at dates and the back half of June to meet the village to advance this. And tomorrow morning, Ally, myself and Renee are meeting to put together some strategy.
The survey questions that were referenced in the special meeting, um, so for those that weren't here, we're, I'm putting together a survey. Um, to uh solicit feedback from all of you about certain negotiating terms. It's a survey that will be anonymous so that you can't see each other's conversations, so we're not violating OMA, but um. I think all in all, this works out best for the library, because Jamie Rackland's recommendation, our lawyer's recommendation is. Even if it takes a little bit longer, strategic and well thought out plans to present to the village. In our negotiation meetings would be recommended, and I think this will give us more time. Um, certainly give the negotiating committee more, based on a committee, those who have negotiating power, more time to prep. Um, and plan and gather all the feedback that is needed, so.
Any, any questions on that?
So in the last paragraph here, we're saying to the, the letter.
So what's the responsible party's been identified for them?
So um, just to clarify a couple of things, going back to last fall. Um, I worked with an electrician, and he has all of his permits and insurances and everything, I was new. And I thought replacing bulbs and fixtures of broken fixtures would not require a permit. Well, no, some of the fixtures were broken, so we replaced the fixtures. But the fixtures were different from the original, and we don't even know really what the original were. I have a couple of photos that I sent to Mike Crook back then, and he ascertained that the original fixtures were broken for many. Many years, I would say, because staff have reported that parking lot has started for a long time. Um, and the change of color intensity. And a combination of things that are directly named in their village ordinance, even though it was. That it was better for the library and the staff for safety, for all the reasons we discussed, you know, now we have lighting, we can actually see and not trip on ice. And have it be a lawsuit for staff, um. The information we received from the village last fall was, you may not know this, but there's an ordinance, and if you change the fixture and any of these elements are changed. It does require a submit, an application to the A V R, or Architectural Review Board, A R B. Um, and so they said, but we want to work with you so that you don't have to go through, if we can figure out a plan. And that's where Mike is saying, even though you did all of these things and everything that they asked us to do, add a timer, reduce the lighting. Um, change the color of the intensity, all of those things. Um, the request was to still develop a photo uh.
Metric.
Thank you, that's the phrase, photometric plan, um, and they provided a partner in the community, um, Brian Renner. Um, to do that for us, um, it was very difficult for me to get a hold of this partner. Um, and so when there was various communication back and forth to try and get this photometric plan. The last time the library spoke with the village about this, again in April, I said, look, I've done all of these things. Can you talk to your partner to try and move this forward? Um, because I said, you know, our lighting, our um architects don't do photometric plans, I had talked to Sean at Enberg Anderson. I said, we don't have the money to develop the plans that the park district did when they did all of their new lighting, I don't have this in the budget. Um, so they said, you know, our partner will do this for free, but then the partner wasn't able to move the work forward. And so in April, when I told them the status of everything, um, they said, okay, well, we'll talk to Brian ourselves, and then we'll take this work on ourselves, Mike. And that's where Mike is saying, I came and I assessed and I did the reports myself, and the last piece is to present. Um, to the A R B. An actual plan to replace the fixtures, because the current fixtures. That were selected literally to replace broken fixtures do not meet the requirements of the A R B. So it needs to be fully presented back to the A R B, and then. We would need to find the funding to replace the fixtures. Um, the first fixture that Brian suggested to me back last fall was like six hundred dollars a pop, and I said, I cannot afford this. Um, for the library, um, and so. When the Building and Grounds discussed this, and then when um, we discussed this, the three of us in terms of when, how to respond to the village. For the I G A, the truth is Drew put that on the table in that first meeting on May first to negotiate, and so. I took that as meaning this issue wasn't closed, and they were still open to figuring out who was really responsible for the lighting. And so that was my interpretation of that conversation, um, and that uh the decision hasn't been made yet, so um. I don't know if that answers your question, it's a long.
The short answer is yes, a permit was required, but. It was sort of in a gray area. It was sort of in a gray area, or painting. There was a discussion back and forth between Renee and Mike Croak about.
The color.
The painting and does the painting require, and like, well, it's the same color, it's gonna be exactly the same color. Well, there's been sun exposure for five or seven years on that paint, so it's.
We don't know what the original color was.
So like almost everything requires a permit. I'm happy to say, A, this letter came in after we had our special meeting, this letter from Mike Croak.
Yes.
I brought it up with Regis and said, Regis, you know, we take this letter seriously. We do want to improve the lighting in the back of the building, but it's a negotiating item right now, you know, we're not gonna. We have to settle who's gonna be responsible for it. Regis was not aware of the letter in detail, who's aware of the issue of the lighting, but not aware of the letter. So and tomorrow Renee's talking to the village as well.
Today.
It was today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have updates.
Okay.
I will add, there are a variety of other codes that we currently have that are not. Um, that uh, the library has also never received a code violation before having discussed this with Janie. Um, in the past, so.
And there are also variances to code issue all the time. I don't know if that's true, public buildings certainly true private.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Well, and Janie, you have a role in Lake Bluff that is unique, that gives you that experience, right?
Okay, um, we're gonna go to new business item D. Uh, Vote Lake Bluff has reached out to me both over the phone and in writing. Um, this is a group in uh Lake Bluff of volunteers. It's a nonpartisan group. They help to identify candidates for school, library, village and park board. Um, so uh, they've outlined for me the timeline, um, in the next. Within thirty days, they've asked me to provide them with the three major issues facing the library today. And qualifications that we're looking for in board members. So, um.
Can I suggest them when you're done?
Yeah, yeah, there are four uh trustees who will be, whose terms will end April of twenty twenty five. Myself, Jenny, Bill and Matt. So Vote Lake Bluff has also asked me, do you know how many candidates you need? Minimum like to fill any. Um, spots, um, so. Bill, would you like to chime in here?
Um, it's just far away, I'm gonna be doing, yeah, so um, I, I'm not gonna be running um. April of twenty five. So I'll have done. This will be the end of my second term, so. But still, still helping the library in any way.
Special proud.
Find myself, yeah.
And do you have an update from Jenny?
So I have also spoken with trustee Jenny Graziano, um, and due to um. Her own preferences, she will not be running for reelection also. Um, so we will need at least two new trustees from the committee.
If you run, I'll run. Alright, so we have two. Okay, and please, all of you are ambassadors of the library.
Yes.
I would love to have, I don't know. I look at the village board, it's five out of seven of them are attorneys.
Sure.
Wouldn't be a bad skill set to add, and that's one of the questions, like what are you looking for?
Medical doctor.
Someone with a big.
I think about Bill's um. Uh, background in finance, and I think that would be, that will be missed, and we're very happy for you in the decision. What I was going to suggest in the process, because the board meeting is on June eighteenth and the response from Bonnie is due. I know this, they said Miss Meyerhoff, they didn't even change that. Um, the, the responses are due before the board meeting, so what I'd like to ask is. For all of you to send me your thoughts and answers to the questions on the back. In an email just directed to me, I'm gonna compile all of it. Um, you know, look for what's similar and then um share this with Bonnie, who will then share it with Vote Lake Bluff.
So this is not a candidate profile?
No, no, this is just, um, yeah, what issues do you perceive facing the library? If, if, you know, we all have some on top of mind. And then what qualifications are you looking for in a board member? Um, you know, think of when you yourself applied um to become a board member, we're gonna have a conversation and engagement committee meeting. While ago, you and I talked about having like a little flyer about running for the library board, what that's like. And I still think, given that we'll have to fill two spots for sure, that will be really a key piece, so we'll do that. So if I could ask for this to be sent, um, I don't know, what do you think? The week of the June tenth, maybe June tenth, is that, yeah?
That's gonna be great.
So please.
Say the week is that?
It's a Monday. So that gives us a week to go over that. So if you can send me the answers to the questions on the back by June tenth, Monday, that'd be great. Thank you so much. And officially, thank you, Bill, for your service. We will thank you more. Thank you very much, and thank you, Matt and Bonnie, for running again.
Um, our next item is a presentation and commentary from Renee on the. Annual work plan for the prior fiscal year, so this document.
I will be brief. At the beginning of this fiscal year, you may remember that I created for this library the first work plan to. Um, prioritize work of the library and then to showcase that to the board to show. How we are working towards some overall goals. Um, the categories, administration, programs outreach, community engagement, technology, these are all associated with my. Um, job description, um, and relate to the goals that have been set for me, and so um. A very, I think, um. Endeavoring list was prepared for the work plan and now you are seeing this. Um, as a completed work plan with all the items with check marks having been completed. And then um with some notation for the items that are either in process or being deferred. Um, I have to say that, um, thank you to Katie who's not in the room, but Katie and Eliza who helped contribute to this. Um, given my own capacity, I think this list could have been maybe two more pages, but I wanted just to highlight as much as I could, given my time. Um. The library has done a lot this year and I'm really proud of the work that has been done in collaboration with all of you. I think about the policy work, I think about um the benchmarking work, the salary, the budgetary work. Um, my hope is to um have a similar work plan presented for you at the June meeting, maybe July, depending on how the negotiations go, I don't know. Um, depending on my capacity, so that you can see what the library hopes to achieve in the new fiscal year. And then this will be part of the, our annual work to you. Eventually, we'll have a strategic plan that maybe is three or five years, and then from there, the annual work plans. You know, roll up to that strategic plan, but without one right now, I wanted to focus the work. That we are doing on some of the goals that have been established for me and for the library and. I just want to applaud the staff considering our incredible staffing capacities of the year, so much has been done. Um, with your support, so thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions for Renee. I'll, I'll just say, I thought this list was very ambitious.
Yes, you did.
And um, you've, so much has been completed, it's impressive.
That's exactly what I was looking at.
We have an amazing staff.
Yes. All right, let's talk pilot.
It's more of the same, and, and I say that not to, I don't know, um. There aren't a ton of surprises, except the staff leave section. I present the monthly report which provides you averages of visit counts. Evenings are still down, weekends are still high, um, the averages are trending the same across the months. Um. We continue to have, I think the phrase I used today was a hemorrhage of staffing issues and um. Uh, this month uh being thirty days, uh, we had about thirty-five percent of our total work hours were paid leave. Whether it's sick, vacation, personal time, it is a little um higher than normal. Because of the end of the fiscal year, those that get personal time. Have that personal time added to their uh accruals at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then at the end of the fiscal year, they have to use it or lose it. So oftentimes, what you'll see is in April, for those that haven't used their personal time like me. Um, I use some of that time for my vacation so that I didn't lose that time, whereas vacation and sick accrue across fiscal years. Um, we did have to cancel three programs this month, two of them were um related to outreach uh due to um. Staffing and new services, one was able to be rescheduled. Um. What I find interesting about this report is hearing from Katie and Eliza on their feedback. Every month I get. A report from them about some of these topics. Um, and then they're presented to you in this report. This month I presented my own feedback about a particular challenge we're having. Managing um person in charge or PIC is what we call it. Um, Katie and Eliza have worked um a significant amount of time, given that Jill and Martha have been on leave. Um, I've started working desk again, um, I picked up some PIC shifts in addition to some weekend shifts because of staffing. Um. You will continue to hear me say that the pilot has been just really great because there was, I don't think there would be any way that we could do what we've done. With more, with more hours. Um, next month is technically the end of the pilot, June thirtieth. Um. At that point, we could decide that there's an action item on the June. Schedule around the June board meeting for the board to discuss either extending the pilot or making any additional changes to the schedule. Um, I'll have more information then about May, but I, based on the data and experiences of staff and my own. Um, I would strongly encourage the board to consider. Either extending the current pilot or potentially even removing another evening. Um, evening coverage is tricky, um, given the PIC issue that I was uh talking about in the report. Um, it does mean that it would remove a. A day for programming for adults, um, but uh. As we are trying to work within our means and be good stewards of the tax dollars that we have from the community, um. And also try to maintain wellness for our staff. I think about conversations from Martha and Katie who gave them last year. Before the pilot was decided, um. We have not found what in my opinion is the right balance of staffing and hours. Um, there's a great goal of mine to try and have a, a, a more. Official study, um, either done by consulting or at least done in-house to really analyze that. Uh, but just based on the fact that we pulled back in so many ways, um, we've had to support leave. Um, we're only just now starting to um have challenges with desk coverage. We've had to put the sign up and new services a couple times this last month. It's not my preference. Um. And we had to cancel some outreach to the preschool, not my preference, but um. So yeah, and I think what you're seeing is just more of the same, but elevated. As we continue to hold a lot of staff on leave, um. Well, I won't be able to talk about specific staffing today, I will be able to talk about staffing at the next board meeting. Um, so just sharing that context, um. The heat map was especially interesting to see though for April, if you look on the Monday ten AM slot. The reason the Monday slot is so red between ten and eleven, that indicates how many people we had in the building. Um, and it's an average across the four weeks. This reflects all those people who came to pick up the solar eclipse glasses. So um, that's why it's so um elevated. Um, but it's the same trend, Saturdays are very busy. I was telling Bonnie, weather was very good in April. Um, we also weren't programming like we're programming this summer. Um, we're still at the end of the spring season, which was planned to be pulled back, um, because we didn't have staff. At the time that we were planning spring, um. So yeah, I think, you know, I just am so grateful for the support of the pilot and. The conversation that we're having about assessing stuff and hours. Happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions. We are at library correspondence.
The first is the letter of a code violation from Mike, which we already discussed, but it is included in the board packet. And also he included um citation from the ordinance, the specific language that he and I reviewed. Early in the fall about how our replacements are not in line with the ordinance. Um. The next document is um my director letter that will be coming out in the newsletter. Um, we got word today that the newsletter is actually expected in homes as early as June second, so disregard what I put in the board. Report, um. Jill is only two weeks back from leave and she has done some amazing work to put it together. It's a stunning newsletter and. Um, this is the one that I, I worked on with getting um the content together with staff. Um, my letter is planning for the future, it references. The retreat, it references Janie's letter um about the building, it references some of the financial stuff that Bonnie wrote in her letter. It introduces the master plan project and it invites the community to our upcoming engagement events. And so I wanted to share this with the board to make sure that you are all aware. Um, I love your help promoting these to the community. We're gonna be doing um. A lot of communication around this, once the newsletter is out, I'm working on a website which will be a one stop shop for. All of the events, but also all of the reports that we have gathered from our various consultants so that people can see. What the assessments are. Anything from the asbestos to the environmental or to the um accessibility report. Um. The next June meeting, well, you will have a facilitation for the board by Amber V. Anderson. You will have your own focus group. Um, to participate in facilitated by Sean and Joe. Um, it will be approximately thirty minutes or so. Um, and your input will be compiled with all of the feedback from staff and the community at these different events in the community, so. Um, I'm very excited about this. And then the last correspondence is Janie's fantastic letter about the state of the library building, so thank you so much, Janie, for putting this together. Um. Well, I, I think it was a great way to communicate transparently. To the community about what's going on, and so please continue to share this letter or talk with those talking points I sent. Um, to the community um about what's going on. The library.
Thanks, Renee. So we'll look for the newsletter, June second.
Ish.
Ish. It's, it's arrived earlier at my house usually than expected. Usually it's seen for the first month, they usually edit a day or two before, so. Sounds like it'll be right on time. Thank you for that, that's the team. All right, any other business to come before the board?
I will just uh say one thing quickly about uh the, the Long Library Foundation, uh. Which consists right now of Kathy Meyerhoff, myself and John Heisman, it is pretty inactive, but we do still have funds. And um, I've met with Kathy Meyerhoff last week to discuss funds for our computer tables and Renee has a check for the deposit.
Fantastic.
So that's, that's great.
Uh, this is gonna replace the carols, the two carols that are right in the front.
So that's, that's going to happen, um. ASAP.
Thank you, Janie, for your advocacy with them. Thank you, Janie, for your advocacy with them.
You're welcome. Kathy and I have discussed what will be the goal of the foundation going forward. And um, we do have a CD, this, this takes um. Pay for this will wipe out what we had, pretty, pretty much wipe out what we had in liquid cash. The rest of it is in the CD that will mature sometime in the first half of October. And that's for around seventy thousand dollars, I think I had all this written down and I had to check out the value. So it's not on my head, but it's somewhere around forty thousand dollars. We will decide, um, yeah, you know, when it matures, we will probably make a gift of that um, to the library. And I'm not sure what sorts of constraints, I think, that something that John and Kathy, I still have to talk about. But basically, once that is done, Kathy wants to be done with the foundation. I've not heard from John whether he does or not. And that being said, there are a couple of different things we could do legally. Um, going forward, we could disband it, we could just pretend it's not happening uh, for uh, three years. And then it disbands itself legally, um, right now Kathy did pay whatever fees are necessary. To keep it going for another year. There is a considerable amount of time and expense that goes into setting up the foundation of course. And so we're kind of leaning towards keeping the foundation active minimally. If such a time comes, we're going to do a nature fund. And it would be nice to have it in place, because once again, as you all probably well remembered, the friends. Are um. They, they want to do, they, they do about twenty grand a year, and that's what they're comfortable with. And we went, we tried to know with them, we tried to join forces with them, and so. That's probably what we'll do, and there's also the issue of me being on the foundation and on board, which is legally, I don't know. I guess, so that's something that we have to discuss and work out, and Ellie grandfathered it for a couple of years or something. In the meanwhile, I, I am spending some time thinking about who might, why might enlist to. Keep the foundation going.
Thanks for that thing.
Thank you.
And thank you, Foundation, for funding our new computer tables. Twelve to fourteen weeks, if no delays overseas.
Fabulous, I'm very excited about getting that taken care of.
Thanks for the update, Janie.
Sure.
Thank you to the foundation. Um, any other business? Okay, um, executive session, not needed, so would anyone like to move to adjourn?
I so moved.
Thank you, trustee Church, I will second at nine fourteen, all those in favor? I, thank you.